Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is now 9:00 a.m. This is a regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court of Hood County. Today is Tuesday, August the 10th. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the Century Jury Room of the Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. We're very fortunate today here to have with us Pastor Michael Edwards of the Long Creek Baptist Church. Again, we have Dr. Bill Miller, who's arranged for Pastor Michael Edwards to be here. I met Pastor Edwards, and one of his parishioners came up to me and grabbed me and said, "My pastor has not given an invocation." And I told her that we were going to straighten that up right now when she told me that he was here. So, the first thing I did was get his card, give it to Dr. Bill Miller, and the rest is history, as you're saying. So, it is with great pleasure that I welcome here this morning Dr. Michael Edwards of Long Creek Baptist Church.
Thank you, sir. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Creator of all that was, all that is, and all that ever will be, we come before you and ask that in your mercy, your love, and in your grace, you forgive us of our sins. Father, we thank you for the honor and privilege of coming together to tend to the business of our community. We pray that you'll fill us with wisdom through your Holy Spirit, and that everything we do here will be pleasing in your sight. Father, we pray for your blessings, love, and protection for all of our military men and women, all our first responders in law enforcement, and all of their families as they go about serving and protecting us. Father, your word tells us that we should pray for those who you have placed in authority over us. According to your word, we pray for those in our local, our state, and our national governments. We pray that they too will seek your face and your heart in all that they do. And finally, Father, we thank you for the multitude and the abundance of your blessings. We thank you for the blessings seen and unseen, the blessings you're holding in store for us. Most of all, Father, we thank you for the precious shed blood of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, and it's through that blood, in the name above all names, that we humbly ask all of these things. Amen.
Amen.
If you wouldn't please, join me on the blast. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Since today is the first regular scheduled Commissioners' Court meeting in August, we have the Citizens at Large comment, which is limited to five minutes per speaker for a total maximum time of 30 minutes, and we have two speakers signed up today. If there's anybody that wishes to speak, you need to fill out a public participation form and hand it to Sheriff Deeds, who will in turn hand it to Ms. Lang, our county clerk, who will then mark it and hand it to me. So, want to get started here. The first one that signed up this morning is Dr. Victoria Calder. Dr. Calder.
Good morning, and thank you for the chance to speak today. I'm Victoria Calder of Granbury. I grew up in Fort Worth, Texas, and in the '50s, before we were all on computers all the time as kids, we came to the river. We came here. And I came to summer camp here over here at El Tisoro from the time I was a little girl in Bluebirds, and then later Campfire. And we spent a lot of time out on the Brazos canoeing and swimming, and it was clear, crystal clear. You could look down in that water and see your feet, well, for me, almost six feet by the time I was a teenager, six feet down, but feet, a lot of feet down. You could see the bottom. You could see every fish. No longer is that the case, certainly not here. As many people who live here will tell you, I wouldn't swim in that lake for anything. And yet, Lake Granbury and the Brazos is the heart of our community. It's the key, ironically, to our rapid explosive development as we bring visitors and tourists here, and people are attracted to the lake, and we need to protect it. So, one of the things I wanted to talk about today, and I'm going to give you all a handout, is how that ties in with you. I don't know, can I just get it to pass down? Anytime. Sorry. So, right now, we have two proposed new sewer plants. One, neither one is permitted. One is the plant on Old Granbury Road, the other being the one of an Knox Ranch Development Plant that is in the permitting process right now. That's going to go outside city limits immediately west of the city, and then the effluent and stages will eventually be discharged down Lambert Creek through the city. That Lambert Creek's the one that runs behind City Hall and comes out there at the beach. So, they presented it at city council last week, and really, you know, city council acknowledged, which is true, that plant's outside the city. That's in the county, just as the county has said this Granbury, Old Granbury Road plant's outside the county's domain. It's in the city. So, that's where I think the coordinated effort that I've been proposing for well over a year between city and county is critical. The criticality of that can no longer be ignored. It's a rare opportunity, before that west plant gets built, by the way, to trade marbles. If you're going to be dumping your effluent in the city, at least, because that'll be built faster than any other alternative right now if it goes through, at least bargain to have the capacity offloaded to that facility instead of spending millions for the city's west plant that's in the works and planned, and then a developer spends his millions to dump millions of gallons just west of that. Why not? Coordinate, collaborate for economy of scale, and offload some of our capacity there. But that's a city-county collaborative effort. So, where you come in is the Hood County Development and Compliance Rules and Regulations, and I haven't copied the entire thing. It's online. But the, and I know this is open to interpretation, but in here, the Hood County, y'all commissioners, this exists for you to implement, and you are to implement the county strategic plan. You are to protect, number B, Section 12B, to protect the watershed that drains into Lake Granbury and the Brazos from the ill effects of pollution and urbanization caused by uncontrolled development for present and future residents of Hood County, and for all citizens of the state using the lake and the river for recreational purposes. Goes on to say, "Ensure the public health to accommodate future population growth in a manner that's compatible with the city's, with the county's natural resources." On page two, I've just put that the Commissioners' Court of Hood County has been delegated responsibility under Texas law for overseeing the quality of water resources in the county as impacted by rapid growth and development, and these regulations are necessary to implement such authority. Page three, I've highlighted, "The Commissioners' Court of Hood County has been delegated special responsibility pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 231, Subchapter K, for overseeing protection of the water resources of the county for the benefit of the county's residents and all citizens of the state utilizing such resources for recreational purposes." And then I did include on the blast page, but along with that, there is a board, a commi, I'm sorry, a committee, Development Commission, that's under the Hood County Commissioners' Court, and that's the final handout. It doesn't exist. It didn't exist a year ago when I pointed that out. When you go to the website, and the website is there, at this time, the Development Commission has been suspended until needed in the future. But this is for the Hood County, this commission exists for each of you to have in your precinct, someone assigned to it to advise you on these regulations and on future development. So, there's a rare opportunity, and I'm going to finish by going geeky, to quote Shakespeare. And when Brutus was speaking to Cassius, he said, "There is a time in the affairs of men which, taken at the flood, leads on to fortune. Omitted all the worth of their lives is bound in shallows and in miseries. On such a full sea we now afloat, and we must take the current as it is served or lose our fortunes." You have an opportunity to set the goal standard to clean up this lake, and I'd be happy to meet with any or all of you. Maybe this needs to be an agenda item, but thank you so much.
The next speaker at large is Mark Lowry.
Judge Massengale, Honorable Court. My name is Mark Lowry. My wife and I, Karen, have lived here since 2014, and we've attended the court session here before, and we're involved now in the city politics. We appreciate the opportunity to speak here. Last time I was here, we talked about the fire department, the volunteer fire department, and we haven't forgot about that topic, and I'm sure you're addressing it here in the near future. All politics is local, not quoting a philosopher, but in quoting Tip O'Neill, all politics starts at the local level. And my wife and I have been, have become very disturbed about what we see at the national level and some at the state level. We decided we want to get involved in the local politics and make a change here in our county to so that it's strong and can be a light bearer for the rest of the state and for the nation. What I'm going to speak about today is the integrity of our election system. Just this past week, the city council talked about the consecutive numbers on the ballots, which we do not have. We're strongly in support of consecutive numbers on the ballot. Dr. Presley, subject matter expert in this area, recommended that that occur. She actually quoted that there are six state laws that are being violated if we don't put consecutive numbers on the ballots. I would venture to say, if we would canvass this room or canvass citizens of Hood County, 90% would probably say, "Yeah, aren't they putting consecutive numbers on the ballots?" I just assumed they were. Clearly, we now understand that we are not doing that. So, that's important. The city attorney actually gave advice, city council, to not interpret the Texas law accurately, in my opinion, and according to the subject matter expert, and they proceeded without approving the contract, without approving an amendment, actually even discussing amendment that the mayor proposed to put consecutive numbers on those ballots, which was disturbing. So, consequently, we're here. I had experience with the elections administrator back at the first special election, and I recognized she had two special elections this year, and she managed to them, it appears, quite well. We met with her. I met with her on the day of the first special election, and quite candidly, she wasn't prepared, in my mind, to some of the questions. In fact, she wasn't very helpful originally, but I think she realized we weren't going anywhere, so she started to answer our questions. She did cause me some concerns about her not being prepared. In fact, a written document planned for voting that is supposed to be ready five days before, she had to wait and give that to us at a later time. So, I'm not saying that's a firing offense, no way. What I do think that she needs to be held accountable. And I also understand, I've not had an opportunity to speak to her, the point I'm getting at is I would like for you to have an agenda item where you can bring her in and ask some questions. I have done some research, and I've created a list of questions I would propose, and I'll leave this with you before I depart. These are some questions that you could start with and certainly expand beyond that. We, right now, use the Hart Intercivic E-Slate System. I have an article here that's probably three years old now, but the confusion at the polls, voters are urged to pay attention using these machines. There was a flaw with the machines. Well, the Secretary of State says it wasn't the machine, that it's actually the voter. But it's so complex, they give them five points that the voter needs to do, because the machine will actually transfer a vote from one party to the next if the voter doesn't go through very carefully and make sure that that has been lodged as they wanted it to be lodged. So, my point is, there's no way for the citizens of this community to speak to that person. We need to make sure that our elections are secure and safe. That's the basis of our republic, and without a safe and secure election process, we will begin to deteriorate within this community, and that's where we need to make a change. I would respectfully ask that you have an agenda item, bring her up here so the public can actually hear answers to these questions. There's an audit system. These machines can be programmed to have a number on them. I've heard that she stated it's $20,000 to $60,000 to put a consecutive number on a ballot. I would like to see where she came up with that formative to get to that place. According to the Hart website, it can actually have, can be configured with a serial number called a ballot key. Well, are we doing that? Are we doing a random audit? I don't know. These are questions that I think a lot of the citizens have, that you have the authority and responsibility to get to the answer of this, and before the next election preferably, but certainly don't lose track of this. I appreciate your time, and I will leave these questions, they could be passed out, I believe, at a later time. Thank you.
Next speaker at large is Sharon Seelander.
I left my four wheels at home today. What I want to talk about is something that I had never realized before because I wasn't handicapped, but I would like to bring to the court's attention that the Justice Center is out of compliance with the American Disability Act, ADA code. Units of government at state, county, and local levels are subject to the ADA and must comply with the ADA standards in new constructions and alterations. All types of public facilities are covered, including schools, hospitals, public housing, courthouses, and prisons. When I came to the courthouse to attend a special called meeting a couple of weeks ago, I was on my walker then, I was unable to access through the doors without assistance from a stranger. There's no buttons to push or anything to open the doors, so if you aren't able to, then you can't come into the Justice Center. I'd like to submit that this Commissioners' Court look into the lack of a push-button accessibility for persons unable to physically open the doors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chris Kaufman.
Good morning, Commissioners' Court, Judge. Thank you for having me today. I'm here on an errand for the council. They voted 6-0 to send me as the messenger, so I want to communicate with you all that we, the city, has historically utilized the county and appreciated the county and election services, and we feel that they've been fair and just in the past and legal. Now then, there's a question of numbered ballots that have been brought up, and the city council went ahead and agreed and signed the existing contract because there's no room in it for an amendment. It says this or that, or the Commissioners' Court could amend it at their desire. So, the council has agreed to allow the election to be held by the county per the agreement that you all already authorized her to execute, and we're so late in the game, you know, the sign-up period ends on Monday to be on the ballot, so, you know, we've got to order ballots next week, and all that has to take place. So, it's too far gone in this election to be able to back up and go through the process to do something different. So, we're asking you, and we understand also that you all sent off for an Attorney General ruling on the legitimacy of the Hart system, and, you know, like the gentleman said earlier, there was the doctor that came to our meeting and shared with us some handouts, and, you know, I started studying after that. We really were caught flat-footed at the council meeting, not understanding the engaging conversation that was taking place. But we did understand that the agreement is the agreement as is, and we couldn't amend it and then send it back to you all. So, the council would like for you all to consider numbered ballots, starting at number one in a sequential order, and then randomly segregated throughout. Now then, the logistics of that may be a nightmare, because your election system not only conducts our election at the same time, but the independent school districts' elections at the same time, and all the others, and so there's some logistic issues to be concerned with on that. But that's what the council sent me to tell you, is if you all would like to amend the agreement, we will call a special session and adopt the amendment to that agreement, and we can provide you the wording for that amendment to make it real easy for your county attorney to review as well. That's just my message today. But again, we do thank you for leading and having an election administrator and a process in which we can all effectively, and cheaply, I might add, conduct elections. Because if you stop and think about it, 25 cents out of every dollar this county collects in ad valorem tax comes from the county payers that live inside the city limits, and so we appreciate the cooperation that we have and the inter-local agreements that we have and how we work together. We don't want to sever a relationship with the county. We want to continue to work with you all, and, but they did officially ask me to come and mention that the amendment could be made by you all, and then we would have a special meeting to adopt the amendment to the contract. So, we're also willing to pay our fair share of the cost, and we don't know what that is, because it would probably be countywide, because it's a countywide election, and there's, you can vote for city council at any precinct that you vote, just like you could any school district, anywhere you have a voting center because of the technology. You don't have to drive out of your way. You can just go the nearest place that the county's hosting an election and vote for your respective precinct or city or school. So, those numbers get complicated. The software is adequately providing that insurances, but at the same time, the appearance of a numbered ballot, you know, that's a law that I learned some 20 years ago when I did an election for my first city that I worked at. We had numbered ballots, and you lay about 10 of them out and let people pick from which one they want, and ideally, you don't know which number they used. Currently, the system you have reconciles every day. The ballots that are, they're on special paper that are by law provided by Hart or by Brother, and I believe you all are just buying them from Hart, and they're special papers, so you just can't throw a special piece of paper in there. They're all numbered and assigned to each polling place, and every day, there's a reconciliation process that goes through the machine that says how many ballots you have, how many people signed up to vote, and that's got to match. And so, when you have multi-page ballots, that might be another issue to be concerned with as well, because if every page is sequentially numbered, then there's another issue of counting each number and how many votes that is actually is. So, anyway, thank you for your time today. Thank you for your service to our county. We appreciate all you do for us. Thank you.
Mayor Jim Jarrett.
Actually, I'm coming as a private citizen, Jim Jarrett. I appreciate each and every one of you guys, Judge, Commissioners, and appreciate the work you do, particularly as you try and keep our city and our county safe and healthy. And I have a request, and for those people who know me, I like to deal with numbers, and I'm having a request for more numbers. And I've worked this request through Jay Webster, and he sort of has his hands tied. I'm hoping that the commission will be able to reach a little deeper into the information pool and see if they can help me. Specifically, we're talking about recent COVID cases, 112 active cases, 18 in the hospital, 137.82% increase in the last seven days, 140 deaths, four since 7/20. And here's where I start getting anxious. Those are big numbers, but I have no base to go back to. 137% increase in the last seven days. Over what? Is that 30 over 100, 3 over 10, or, you know, 1 over 3? What is 137%? And again, this is, please, this is not county commissioner, this comes from DSHS. I'm just hoping that if enough people start pounding the drum, we can get accurate or actual base data, numerators and denominators, instead of just the percentages that are come. The other one is 71,000 some odd people in Hood County have been tested. That's quite a bit of the county. How much of that is over 60? Because we know that the over 60, the vulnerable group, if they have been vaccinated and tested, if they've been vaccinated, then we probably are in a pretty good position. We're in a better position than we might be if we just look at the one number of who's vaccinated. And another number was every seven days, we see 13 admissions. Well, it's two admissions a day. Do we see anybody leaving the hospital? And I think we do, since there's only four deaths since 7/20. So, somebody's coming in, somebody's coming out. What is the overall number? Just trying to get a bigger and a clearer picture. The information has to come from DH, DA, DSHS, and it comes to you guys, and you pass it on, and I appreciate that. And if you could just push back and say, "Give me, give me the numerator and the denominator." I think we'd have better information. Thank you.
That's all the comments we have from citizens at large. So, our next item is the consent agenda. Is there any commissioner that wish to pull anything from the consent agenda or discuss anything, wish to make any comment regarding the consent agenda? I have one thing that I wish to pull that I need to speak with the county clerk about, and that's the minutes from the July 21st meeting. I found a couple of errors and omissions in them that I need to talk to you about. I couldn't get with you yesterday, but I will get with you after that. So, I want to pull A1 from the consent agenda, that's something that the county clerk and I can surely work upon and get corrected, but anything else?
Judge, there's actually, yeah, there's actually two issues, two items under A1, and that is the workshop minutes and also the minutes of the regular Commissioners' Court on the 27th.
One and number two.
Yeah. One is A1.
That is two. Yeah, that's, okay. Yeah. So...
I signed A2.
Yeah.
A2 is fine.
You did?
Yes, I did.
What if I want to talk about it?
Did you want?
Not yet. You haven't signed it yet. I'll bring it to you.
Oh, you did? Okay. I didn't see it. Have you all read it? I think I've read it. I didn't see anything. I thought it was fine. I thought I had. Budget.
Let's get on to, do you want to get on to number one, or you're just wanting to pull number one?
I'm just want to pull number one. That's all I want.
Then, I'd like to also pull number two to talk to the county clerk.
Okay. Okay. So, we'll pull A1 and 2 and discuss about that, and that's something that we can do. Is there anything else about the consent agenda that any commissioner wishes to discuss, pull, or do I hear a motion subject to those two withdrawals of A1 and A2?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda subject to removal of item 1 and 2.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the consent agenda subject to pulling A1 and 2 from the agenda, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Let's bring us down to the illustrious Mr. Donald Lenny, who's got some work for us today. Welcome, Mr. Lenny. He always does a good job for the county here.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. First thing on our item is approve the certification of the county-maintained road mileage for Hood County as of July 31st, 2021. In your packet, the first two pages that is actually a copy of the order that we're asking you to sign at the end of the, at the meeting. The third page is showing what's happened in that timeframe, what's been taken off, what's been put on, and of course, our total mileage at the bottom after all that's been done. The last one is one that we started about five years ago. It just keeping you in touch about how many roads are paved in the county system, and it's still sitting at 99.96% of the roadways are paved.
Okay.
There any other questions? Road operation does recommend approval of signing this order.
Okay. I'll make the motion then to approve the certification of the county-maintenance road mileage for Hood County as of July 31st, 2021.
Second. Let me just make sure here that we have, is this on post? I think, all of these, the next speakers are all in Port Ridgely. Am I right on that? Nothing is on this? That's right. Okay. Got, good. So, motion's been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the Hood County certification of county-maintenance road mileage, which has been prepared. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Andrews. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Do you want us to sign this one, or is this the copy here?
Yeah, I put copy on, you should have in your packet, yeah, from your secretary. No, that's just simply a copy that the court can see.
All right. We'll sign all those for you then. Okay. All right. Number two.
Well, the second one we have is consider request of the Port Ridgely West HOA to place a temporary radar driver feedback sign periodically on various signposts within the development. And also in your packet, there's a copy of the email when they first contacted Hood County about this proposal. The next page is actually the sign that they're, they're looking at placing on the post. Port Ridgely West has one main road that runs through it. It's called Winding Way, and I believe by talking to some of the individuals at Port Ridgely West, that's the main focal point of their, wanting to put this sign up, is up and down this road and in various places during any time, you know, any certain time period.
We have some speakers that have signed up to speak on this. The first speaker on this is Sally Adamson. Ms. Adamson? Ms. Adamson?
Thank you very much for your time this morning. I am the President of the Port Ridgely West POA, and we just wanted to make you aware in, as part of this request, that we are a small neighborhood. We have about 120 homes. We have one main street that goes in and out, and it's a dead end, so there's really no reason for pass-through traffic. The speed limit of the neighborhood is 20 miles an hour, which seems very appropriate because we have many walkers, dog walkers, children, older people, residents that we are concerned about when we see speeding down our main street. Our concern is with resident cars, visitor cars, delivery trucks, and construction vehicles. We want a way to remind them of the speed limit and the need for them to slow down, and we're hoping that this electronic sign that we will use periodically and move around will serve that purpose and help us to remind people that this is a neighborhood and it's not a speedway. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. And the second speaker on this is Timothy Payne. Mr. Payne?
Judge Commissioners, I'm just here to answer any technical questions that you might have. I first became aware of these type of signs when I was in Utah last summer, and we stayed in a little neighborhood, unlike most of the neighborhoods here in the county, and I just noticed that they seemed to be effective. I consulted with a traffic engineer, a friend of mine, retired out of the city of Dallas, and he noted that things like speed bumps are not very effective nor popular and are often removed at the insistence of the same people who put them in, and that temporary signs like this are generally effective. And then, from the same vendor, we talked to the security people over at De Cordova, and they have five similar type signs that they have on trailers, and the Chief of Security over there told me that they had found them to be effective as well. That way, there's no resource requests from the county for additional enforcement or paying overtime for deputies or anything like that. So, that's basically the technical part of the request. I can answer any questions you might have. As far as the sign itself, it's 18 by 24, battery power, lasts seven to 10 days. Some of these signs, you can get a lot of data out of. We're going to purchase the simple one that just says your speed is, and it flashes to slow down, so...
So, the homeowners association is purchasing this sign?
That's correct. We will purchase a sign, maintain it, mount it, move it. So, there's no need for any county resources to do this.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I'd just like to ask Donald what his opinion on it. He, you maintain that road, don't you, Donald?
Yes.
That's an, just like to hear your opinion about those. Does it affect you in any way?
Hold it one second. Ms. Seelander, did you want to speak on this one too?
Is this on the Ridgely? No, I want on C.
On the Ridgely?
No, the traffic, the stop sign on Gee Road and Rainy Court.
Oh, on G? Okay, that's C. Okay. Okay. Got you. All right. Okay, that's the only...
Thank you.
That's the only two speakers on Port, on Port Ridgely West, and I agree with you. What is, what's your recommendation, Mr. Lenny?
It's simply, the reason to come to court is because that it is a county signpost, and it's something that my department just couldn't, without your approval. But no, we, we don't have a problem with it when, as a matter of fact, I'm with Mr. Payne, I've already told him I'm going to keep up, you know, see how it works and everything, just in case it, as a court, that y'all want to look at it.
I think they're pretty effective. It's, it gives you an opportunity, if you're coming up there and you're doing 31 or 32 miles an hour, and it's a 20, and you see it flashing at you, it's better than getting a ticket right away, isn't it? And then, it kind of wakes you up to that on the deal, so I think that's a good idea. Nobody has spoken against it in Port Ridgely. So, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the request for Port Ridgely West HOA to place a temporary radar driver feedback sign periodically on various signposts within the development.
Second. Okay. Commissioner Wilson has made the motion to approve the radar feedback signs, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Okay, what else do you have, Mr. Lenny?
Judge, the last one we have on the agenda, it's a public hearing to discuss and consider approval of the following traffic regulations and take appropriate action. This particular one is establishing a stop sign on Gee Road at Rainy Court, creating a three-way stop intersection.
Okay. At this time, we're then going to convene into a public hearing to discuss this, and we have one public speaker, somebody that we don't know at all. Sharon Seelander, we saw you hobble up here previously, Ms. Seelander.
I can't hobble again. I'm doing a lot better. I'm way better than I used to.
But, yeah, at least you don't have your four-wheeler.
This is true. I've graduated. Okay, so I've lived near Gee Road and Rainy Court since 1999, and I find it strange we're having a public hearing to discuss this item since there's been a stop sign already erected at this spot for a couple of weeks. I haven't been driving lately, but I just noticed that it's been there now for maybe two to three weeks with big red flags on it. And like I say, there's not been a stop sign there since, I've been there since 1999, and it's only like a two-way stop. There's one going out of the Blue Water Shores subdivision, and one on Rainy Court. There's not a third one anywhere, which causes, could cause a problem because there's people I watch go right through it, they don't know it's there, it's never been there, so there's creating a little bit of a problem there, I think, for a possible wreck or something. I don't find it effective, because like I say, nobody's stopping at it. Most people don't, because they don't even realize it's there until they've already gone through it. Most of the traffic is on Gee Road. It's a pretty busy road, it's the main one, and Rainy Court is kind of a feeder road into Gee Road, and there's been a stop sign there ever since I've lived there since 1999, and people are used to that one. I see maybe, you can see two cars a week come onto Gee Road from Rainy Court. There's just no traffic there, so I don't understand the reason for having this stop sign erected there. And so, I'm asking my Commissioner, Jack Wilson, to take a look into this and make sure that it's necessary to have that additional stop sign. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other speakers on this that I have here, am I correct? I've got so much paperwork here this morning, but, okay. All right, Mr. Lenny, do you have any other comments before we reconvene back into the Commissioners' Court?
Judge, the stop sign that she was speaking of, that's the one that comes out of Blue Water Shores, it's on Blue Water Drive. That was approved in Commissioners' Court on July 9. Once we put up a stop sign that hasn't been there, we always put up two red flags up on the top to bring attention to it, and I've heard, just like she has spoken, that there has been quite a few running through it. However, this one is one that's going into Blue Water Shores off of Gee Road. So, right now, there's two stop signs. If this is approved, it would be three stop signs and would create a three-way intersection, stop intersection.
Understand?
So, you're going to put it like coming into the water shores off, but do you reckon that's what's going to be?
That's what's on, what's on the agenda.
And can I ask him a question? So, what prompted this? I mean, there's almost, there's such a little traffic there.
Commissioner Wilson asked if we can put it on the agenda.
Who did?
Commissioner Wilson.
Then I'm going to discuss this with Commissioner Wilson.
Okay. There's nothing else, we're going to reconvene back into Commissioners' Court so that we can vote on it. So, we're now reconvening back at 20 minutes to 10 into the Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion or further discussion on the approval of the traffic regulations at Gee Road, the stop sign?
I make a motion that we establish the stop sign at Gee Road at Rainy Court, creating a three-way stop. This is possibly, you're realizing there's not, you know, currently some, a lot of traffic in that area, but with the development that's going in at the end of Gee Road very shortly, that will justify the sign right there.
That's several miles away.
See, I think there's some hands up back there. You guys turn in a form of speech or something?
I would like to, if I could speak.
Oh, well.
I'm new at this, I don't know the rules of the law.
It's a public hearing. Well... This, I don't have anything. Did you fill out a public participation form?
Sure I did. Like I say, I'm new at this, I'm filling out, I'm used to having a big meeting of the subdivision and we all discussing things, so this one here kind of poses for a loop. I'll have to fill out a piece of paper to speak, I will.
Point of order, can we, we close the public hearing? Can we reopen it? That's a question. Where's Matt Mills?
Why not?
Can we? I, you know, I just don't want to, I don't want to get us in trouble, but we, I think we close the public hearing, but I don't have any problem reopening it, depending on the rest of the court, to let people talk in a public hearing.
That a motion to reopen, I'll second it.
I'll make motion to reopen a public hearing.
Okay, management or motion to reopen the public hearing by Commissioner Cotton, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor of reopening, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, this is all on County Attorney Matt Mills. Could we give her a...
Does she need one?
Yeah. Just put your name and an address right quick, ma'am, so... Katie, do you understand what, now that just said DH, which one under DH does she know? Huh? Well, look at, look at, we've got a bunch of A's. All of it is A. This one right here? So, that's what she wants, D8. I wish they'd write down at least what they want to speak on, they could just put one word, salaries.
Can I make one more question on a point of order? I think the Commissioner Wilson made a motion. I just, I just don't know, we don't want to do anything illegally, but he made a motion, can we?
Can he get a second?
But I don't think, did he?
No, no, no second, so, and he was the one that made the motion, so I figured that was tantamount to withdrawing his previous motion, since we didn't give a second. Yeah, so he withdrew it, so, okay. Okay, yes, ma'am, would you state your name?
Good morning. Sorry for the confusion. Like I said, I'm not a speaker, and I've never done this before, so I apologize to the courts. My name is Christine Rafferty. My husband, Richard, we've been in Blue Water Shores for over a year. We love our new home. I don't know whose decision it was to put up a stop sign, it being at Blue Water Shores, and all the people that live there, I thought that would be something that we, the people, would discuss and see if that would be okay for doing that. When you're coming in, you know, the speed limit's 40 as you're coming in, and then it goes down to 20. Everybody, if they've ever taken driver's ed, you're supposed to be watching where you're going anyway, and you have all the side streets as you're coming in. Okay, so then, when you're going out of Blue Water Shores, there is the stop sign on Rainy that takes you down to the dam, where a lot of the boaters take their boats and everything, or they go camping down there. We have very little traffic coming up off of Rainy Road, so the stop sign is good. Most of us take that road and either go to the dam store and get minnows, or to the dollar store, and we all come back that way, or we come back a different way, back off of Gee Road. I really don't think a three-way stop sign is appropriate. As it is with the sign that is up and it has the flags up, nobody's stopping. My husband and I, when we leave for church, everybody runs that behind us. It's never been there, so, you know, I just don't understand that. I think what really needs to be done, instead of a three-way stop sign, whenever we all are leaving Blue Water Shores and we're coming out of Gee Road and we're going on to Fall Creek Highway to turn left, we have a massive amount of traffic that I think that we need a light there, a traffic light, that when we come off of Gee Road, and that will trigger that, for traffic to stop both ways. They have started building over 500 new homes in Pecan. They are talking about building 1,000 or 2,000 more. Traffic has increased tremendously in the year that my husband and I have lived here. We have visited here in the years past, but now we are residents. So, I would say that my husband and I, both our opinion, that I do not think that we need three-way stop sign. It is just a catastrophe, and I would vote for a traffic light at Gee Road and Fall Creek Highway. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the public speakers that wishes to address this, okay? We're going to now reconvene back into Commissioners' Court at 13 minutes to 10, okay? Mr. Lenny, does, she said, this lady had mentioned about putting a traffic light there. I mean...
Fall Creek Highway is a state highway. That would be something that would be...
That's not...
We'll have to coordinate if that was to happen.
Thanks for that clarification. I didn't know exact, I know the general vicinity, but I didn't know these two roads. Okay. All right, back to Cynthia. Anybody wish to make a motion now concerning the traffic regulations or the stop sign at Gee Road at Rainy Court?
I make a motion that at this point, we pull number 8AC1.
Okay. A motion has been made by Commissioner Wilson to pull Roman numeral 8AC1. Do I hear a second?
Second, I'll second that.
By Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Lenny.
Thank you, Judge.
Now, we have Mr. Clint Ed, Development, set a public hearing for the replat of Bentwater on Lake Granbury.
I got a short one today.
Yes, you do. We got us a day, too?
Yep. Development has accepted an application for the replat of Bentwater on Lake Granbury, Section 3, Lot 494R, and Precinct 4. Staff recommends setting the public hearing for September 14, 2021, Commissioners' Court.
Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion regarding setting of this public hearing?
Yeah, Judge, I'll, I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for the replat of Bentwater on Lake Granbury, Section 3, Lot 494R, for the Regular Commissioners' Court of September 14, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Eagle to set a public hearing for September 14, 2021, on the Bentwater on Lake Granbury, Section 3, Lot 48494R, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Ed. Okay, Ms. Becky Kid, line item transfers. You want to do these one at a time, or, I guess since it's...
We can do them all at once. There's, you know, this, we're, the year is winding down, and I'm very happy there's only a couple, so I was worried that because we did cut budgets last year, there might be more, but we're doing pretty good. The first one is from, who is the first one from?
That's me.
Is that you?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
Okay. Judge Commissioners, requesting to move $1,500 from postage to part-time and $115 from postage to FICA Medicare. This is for the temporary male clerk that we had to bring on. The position's going to last probably two weeks longer than expected, but I'm moving enough to cover five weeks, you know, just in case, but probably won't need all of that. But that's the reason for the request.
I'll make the motion to approve Item 1 and 2.
I make a motion by Commissioner Cotton to approve Items Number 1 and 2, line item transferred, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right, next.
I spoke with Constable Precinct One this morning. I don't think he will be able to make it, but he needs a new temp, uh, I'm sorry, a new timestamp machine. If you would approve this, we could move on.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion to approve line item three, Constable, increase supplies, decrease part-time?
What is the timestamp machine? I'm sorry.
Everything that comes in their office, it's of any kind of legal or financial manner.
This isn't, this isn't keeping up with personnel hours or whatever.
No, sir.
Okay, all right, got you. All right. Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the $700 increase in supplies and decrease in part-time for.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to increase supplies and decrease part-time, second by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Okay. Financial, Ms. Kidd.
Gentlemen, the expenditures for this court are $498,917.62. You've all been given advance copies of the payments that we're going to make. You've also been giving, been given a list of the payments over $10,000. Are there any questions regarding these invoices?
If none, Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the payments for the period of July 21st through August the 3rd in the amount of $498,917.62.
A motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the, the bills from July 21st through August 3rd, 2021. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd. Okay, this brings us down to miscellaneous, D1, consider and take appropriate action to approve the proposed 2021-2022 Hood County holiday schedule. Everybody has that schedule and the holidays that were there, it's 14 holidays. Do I hear a motion regarding the 14-day Hood County holiday schedule from Columbus Day, which is October the 11th, 2021, through Labor Day of September the 5th of 2022?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the proposed holiday county, or county holiday schedule.
A motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the Hood County holiday schedule, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Item number two, consider and take appropriate action to authorize a county judge to sign the interlocal cooperation contract between Hood County Sheriff's Office and Pecan Valley Mental Health and Mental Retardation Region for providing transportation services for individuals to experience a mental health crisis event. Sheriff Dean and.
Good morning.
Good to see you.
From Judge, Commissioner.
Okay. The head of Pecan here.
Judge Commissioners, this is pretty much identical to what we've had in place for quite a few years now in my time as sheriff, so the only thing that's changed is the dates, basically, and it's what it actually is, that way it reads, it's like we get the, the people transported, but it's my transport, but it's at 56 cents per mile, and so we've been doing this and filling out the paperwork and submitting that for years, and it's a maximum $20,000 pot of money, not to exceed that. So it starts, if, if you guys sign it, September 1st, so I'd ask that you approve this and we can get a little something back for all the mental commitments that we do in transport.
And that's a very good job, and you do a very good job doing that, too.
Thanks, sir.
Would you like to say something?
I would just add real quickly that we enjoy collaborating with Sheriff's Department in many other ways as well as this one. And just to, to make a clear point, that this money that we're talking about here is not the county's local contribution money to Pecan Valley, so we're not turning around and giving it back to the county. That's used for match. The money we're talking about here comes out of, it's state general revenue funds. Our funding is quite complicated. It comes to us in buckets and you have to spend it in a certain way or you lose it. You have to give it back to the state, which is good, cost-effective. So this is funding for crisis intervention services and as long as we have this category of funding coming to us, we're willing to collaborate with the Sheriff's Department. The mental health code is clear. It's the sheriff's office responsibility for mental health transports, but we find it's a good way to collaborate and support the Sheriff's Department and all they do. So, thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Rafferty.
Is this just a renewal or is this a new contract? We just renewing another one for another year?
It's basically the same, but gets renewed every year, September 1st.
Hear that our county attorney has looked at it and?
Well, it's, yeah, it's, nothing's changed, basically, except the dates, the, the dollar amount hadn't changed, except I guess the 56 cents per mile, so I didn't send it to the county attorney, but.
But it's basically what we've been doing every year.
Yeah, it's what we've been doing every year and it comes back to, to the county, so.
Right.
It's not costing the county, it's helping the county.
Well, exactly.
We have a very good relationship with Pecan Valley, too. They still have your people that volunteered to go out on domestic disturbances. I mean, we have a real good relationship with Pecan Valley. I, I like working together, so. In fact, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract and allow, authorize the county judge to sign that interlocal cooperation contract between the Sheriff's Department and Pecan Valley. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. Y'all had me word there for a second, by the way. My heart kind of skipped a beat. I thought I was going to have to call on you, Ms. To second my motion up here. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Item number three, discuss and take appropriate action to increase the temporary mail clerk pay to $12 per hour effective August the 2nd. Hello, Mr. Glenn Tillman.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. As I mentioned earlier, we had to bring on a temporary mail clerk. She's doing a great job, but the position's actually going to carry over probably two weeks longer than expected, two to four, and she did agree to stay on, though she did have to break a prior commitment. So in consideration, I would like to increase her pay to $12 an hour for these last, last few weeks of the, of the position, which is, you know, far less than hiring and training a whole new person just for, for a couple of weeks.
Okay. Do I hear a motion regarding increasing the temporary mail clerk to $12 per hour?
I'll make that motion, Judge.
A motion made by Commissioner Cotton to increase the temporary mail clerk pay to $12 per hour, effective August the 2nd, 2021, second by.
Second.
Commissioner Andrews.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number four, Constable Randy Ellis, the man in black. Y'all thought that only Johnny Cash wore that, but we have Mr. Ellis here this morning.
Judges, Commissioners.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Constable.
Good morning. How are y'all doing? I was lucky enough to be able to speak with all of y'all last week and some this week about this, and I was able to talk to Ms. Kidd about putting it on the agenda, and I guess I'm here now asking for that new vehicle so that my future reserve can drive my current used 2015 vehicle. I don't have a vehicle for a reserve at this time.
And your vehicle that you're driving is a 2015, I believe you said.
Yes, sir.
So it's already almost seven years old, so, okay. Do I hear a motion regarding a vehicle for Constable Ellis?
I'll make a motion that we approve, take appropriate action to purchase a new law enforcement vehicle out of Fund 55.
Do we have to put a number on that?
Please, I need a number.
I'm sorry.
Tell them to please.
Yes, ma'am.
You wanted that new bulletproof one, didn't you?
Excuse me?
You wanted that new bulletproof one, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Trump. Okay.
In my motion, you know, not to exceed $58,035.28.
No, sir, I'm sorry. There's an additional $885 for.
That is, that's for the next.
That's the next item.
That's the next item.
Thank you. Glenn.
Fifty-eight what?
Fifty-eight, 03528, .28.
Okay. I'll second.
Made by Commissioner Wilson to purchase a new vehicle out of Fund 55 for Constable Precinct Three, not to exceed $58,035.28, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Next is what we just talked about, the remain an unmarked unit.
Yes, sir.
Is that what you want?
Yes, sir. I was, I was going to ask the court if we could have an agreement for that unit to remain unmarked.
Okay. All right. And that, are just with minimum markings, so is that what, it's going to cost just 800 and some odd dollars to do or you're saving 800?
I'm saving that. What I have already in my budget would be to get magnetic decals that I could put on when necessary and then also have off if I'm wanting to find some of these people that try to elude us and not, not allow us to serve them.
So you still want the 800?
I don't need that.
You don't need that.
I don't need that. If you'll allow it to remain unmarked and allow me to purchase magnetic ones, I'm already budgeted to have that.
Oh, okay, okay. So do I hear a motion to allow Constable Ellis, Precinct Three, to have his new vehicle remain an unmarked unit?
I'll make a motion to allow the new vehicle to remain unmarked.
Yeah. Save us $835 here. Yeah.
Eight eighty-five, excuse me.
Eight eighty-five. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. This brings us then to item number six, which is discuss and take appropriate action regarding the health reimbursement guidelines and reimbursement request form for the 2021-2022 fiscal year plan. The health, human research, Ms. Melissa Welborn.
Good morning. You should have received both of these pages in your packet. We discussed this at great length during the plan renewal for our medical insurance. I just wanted you to see the guidelines and the request form that will be presented to any employee who seeks reimbursement over the $2,000 up to the $3,000 deductible. This will be discussed at length during open enrollment and then we will have any employee who seeks reimbursement sign the guidelines.
Okay. We all have the, we've discussed this and I think, so what we want to do is to approve the forms that we have that are listed in our books, is that?
Yes, sir, that is correct. I just want your blessing on presenting this to our employees unless someone has some changes. Matt Mills has reviewed this.
Are you all right with the, it's pretty clear-cut and they're very clear and concise, aren't they, Mr. Mills?
Yeah, just for clarity, Judge, we've already signed the contract for the, for the health.
For the medical plan, that's correct.
And this here is really, I don't want to say outside of the contract, but it's something we agreed to do, but it's really not in the contract, but this is what we're doing and this is the form we're going to use for people to agree to that.
That is correct.
So they understand what's going to happen with their deductible.
Yes, the medical plan has already been signed off on and approved and put in place. This is just something that the court is offering to the employee.
That's right. It's between the county and the employee.
That's correct, yes.
To do with the plan.
Absolutely nothing to do with our plan.
It's just to save the money that we did by increasing the deductible to $3,000 and hope that this will work out.
Yes, sir. I hope this will definitely help our plan.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I take the motion. I guess the motion could read it, I'll make the motion to approve the health reimbursement guidelines and reimbursement request for the 2021-22 fiscal plan year.
The request for, the forms that are there.
Yes, sir.
This will be, if this is proposed next year, I'll bring it to the court again.
Yeah, this is what we will be using for the employees that decide.
That's right. This will be done on a year-by-year basis.
Perfect. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the health reimbursement guidelines and reimbursement request forms for the 2021-2022 fiscal plan year, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Welborn. All right, item number seven, take appropriate action to hold a public hearing for the fiscal year 2022 proposed Hood County budget. So we will now convene into a public hearing at seven minutes after 10:00 a.m.? Is that what we're going to do?
I thought we haven't.
We had one, but we need another one, don't we?
You probably need two. This is the second of the two.
Yeah.
Is there a timeframe we need to have?
We need to have this today, yes, sir.
We have to post it for a certain amount of time, don't we?
No, sir.
But, so what are we doing here? Setting the public hearing?
This is so the public can speak on the budget.
Now?
Now.
Oh, okay. I just made sure what it was.
So you have a proposed budget online and I sent the budgets out to each department so that they know there are increases and decreases. I also sent an email with that, that if they needed any changes, to please let us know so that you would have them in advance, so that you could review them. I finished them up this morning. Sorry that it took till this morning, but they're not that many. None of them will exceed where we are, so I would like to go over them one by one and get them approved, and I will update the budget and put it online again. The first one, which you have a copy of, is to increase the captain's pay in the jail. I'm sorry?
You have to choose some citizen comments.
Well, this is.
Do you, I didn't know how, if you wanted them to speak first or?
Well, let's go. Let me see.
Let's let them speak first, if that's okay?
Yeah, well, let's let, let's let.
Randy Ellis and Chad Jordan.
Yeah, this is D7. Yeah, Randy Ellis and Chad Jordan. Okay, so Constable Ellis, you're first. I didn't see that.
And they have yours.
Okay.
We're going to vote on it, but they have it.
Okay. Perfect. I have questions and I've seen this done before and I don't even know if you can answer questions right now, if I just get a certain allotted time to speak. Can you let me know that before I get started? Do I only get five minutes or can I ask the court questions?
Well, you get five minutes because there's only two people that's asked to speak on item number seven.
Okay, the first question would be, is this the workshop? Are we having workshops or is this the only time that we have to speak on the budget before you vote on it?
We already had budget workshops, Randy.
We did?
Yes.
Okay, and how many did we have?
One or two.
I know we had.
No, one.
I know, I know that we had. Yes, sir, I know that we had that one. I was just asking, is this the second one? In the past, I have seen that we've gone through things that, it just was done different and I'm wanting to know if now is the time that I get to speak on it or if there's going to be another time or if y'all are actually about to vote on this budget.
Randy, if you've got some issues, if you've got some areas to increase, that's why I sent a note out. Please let us know if you need to discuss something. This is a public hearing for the public and for all county employees, department heads, elected officials to come and say, hey, there's an error, this is not right, things of that nature.
Okay.
This is still proposed. It will still be proposed at the end of this day.
Okay.
Until they vote on it to approve it. That's, this is another step in getting a budget in place.
Okay. So if this is not a workshop, then when we're discussing this, then I have nothing...
Public hearing to discuss in the proposed county budget is what it is.
So have you seen the proposed county budget?
Yes, sir.
And do you have some comments on that?
I have some questions.
Then this is the place to do it, isn't it?
Okay. One of the things is, based on the proposed budget, it looks like that we're deciding to deviate from the current step plan. In some instances, 12, 15, 30 percent, in some, .07 percent. And my first question is how we came to decide that, who we're only getting .07 and who we're getting 30.
First of all, I don't believe anybody's getting .07. I don't know what you're looking at.
You can, you can look at my clerk. Yeah, you can look at her increase for the .07.
I've got the budget right here in front of me.
And it was done to, I guess it was done to make them even with Yolanda, is why I'm assuming that was done.
Yolanda gets a $600 stipend, and we really shouldn't use them.
Okay. I apologize, I don't...
You what?
Nothing, sir.
Okay.
I'm not trying to be difficult, I just have questions about the only employee that I have.
No, there's no silly questions. You can ask whatever.
Which item are you talking about, please? Randy, I've got your, your budget in front of me. Which, which item are you talking about on that budget?
Well, specifically, my only question is how, what algorithm we put in, what we look at.
That to determine who is getting the bigger increases and who is getting very little, why some departments are going up substantially in pay and why some aren't. That's all I'm asking, is how that was determined.
As we discussed, and Randy wasn't in the meeting, we've discussed this before, the stepping grade plan, we, we are not moving people up on that. We're giving a COLA, a Cost of Living Allowance, per person. It was at least 3 percent. Some people with tenure got more than that. That is something that we've all discussed. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just looking at your, it shows that you, the elected official for Constable Three, is 2.6 percent increase.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And let, let me explain that. I sent an email out last year...
I don't, my, my pay is not in question.
Right. But I want to make sure, I sent this email out because last year, with the way...
But your clerk, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to answer, he's, for his clerk, it shows a 5.76 increase.
I will take that. If you're saying it shows a 5.7, then I have nothing left to say.
That's what it says for the clerk. Says the clerk, prior, this year's budget is 23,405, and it's going to 31,201, which is an increase of 1690. That's, took this...
That's not correct.
Took this off the website this morning.
It's not correct. She's not at 23. She's at 29 and going up to 31.
This shows the clerk, and that's what it shows, 5.76 percent. So Becky...
If that's, if you're telling me that she's getting a 6-point something percent, I have no questions.
That she is.
Okay. And that's documented in court that she's getting a 6-point something percent increase?
She's going to 31,200.
Okay, that's not 6.1 percent.
From where it was, it is.
This is, this is Constable, this is Constable Three.
329, and she's going to 31,200. That's a 6.16 percent increase.
Okay.
Right now, she's making 31,201, 23,402, going to 31,201.
Going to 31,00201.
Yes, sir.
Which is a...
That's what it's showing that she's going to, 31.
1699 dollar increase, 5.76 percent.
And that 5.76 may be because of the $600 that wasn't there before.
Okay.
But she's, she's going...
Again, yeah, I just have questions. I didn't know if this was a workshop, or we could do this, and...
Ask everything.
And I still have the question of how we come to decide who gets more and who gets less. Was it by that, the study that we did?
That's part of it.
Okay.
That's part of it, but there were people who had never really received any kind of step increase, that they were making somewhere in the neighborhood of $800 more a year than someone who had been here eight years. So that's one of the areas they looked at. Some people who had never really been given a decent raise, they wanted to bring them up for, because of their tenure.
Okay.
That's some of the things they looked at.
Okay.
And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get everybody to a living wage.
Okay.
Not a decent one, yet.
But a living wage, okay.
Now, the, what he's talking about, or what you're talking about in the elected official column, last year, I had to budget an extra day's salary because of the way pay periods fall. So with that extra day's salary in last year's budget, the 3 percent that the elected officials are given this year, subtracted from last year, it doesn't show a full 3 percent increase, but it's still a 3 percent increase. I don't have to budget an additional day this year, or it would show that too. So everyone is getting at least 3 percent, period. Are we good?
No.
What else?
I guess the second question is how we determine what step of clerk they are. Like, she's a grade three, there's, and there's grades that go all the way up, and all I've ever seen is one job description for clerks. How would I go about having mine reevaluated and put on a different grade? I know that that can't be done right now, obviously, because it sounds like we've already decided what we're doing, but that's what I would like to look for in the future. I'm just trying to go to bat for her. It does, I don't understand why we're not considering increasing her pay more with what all this she does.
You know, for me, the stepping grade was brought in a long time ago.
Yes, sir.
I'm actually, just speaking for myself right now, since we're in a public hearing workshop, I'm for your work product.
Yes, sir.
What you're actually having to do. And there is a great discrepancy among the constables.
Yes, sir.
And you know that as well as I do. And it's more so in the constables, I think, than in any other department. For example, in Constable Four, the new clerk that Chad Jordan has, because of him conducting the tax sales that he has... Her workload is probably four or five times, I don't know, but a lot greater than the other constables' workloads. And I've brought that up before, and it, it seems like that this goes back a long time, that everybody has, I guess, in your office, she's called a clerk.
Right.
But in Chad Jordan's office, she's called a secretary. And I think her duties are a lot more. I mean, just the letters and the deeds and information, the monies that are taken in by Chad Jordan's clerk, is, this lady does a lot more work. I mean, she is, always. And then in some other departments, there's other people that go around and go into various other departments who shall remain nameless and say that they're not doing anything. They're just not doing anything. I don't know how they have the knowledge to say whether or not they're doing something. Maybe when you just walked in, they were just not doing something. I don't like that. I, I've never had that problem. I based everything based upon what you do.
Yes, sir.
Your work product.
Right.
If you didn't do as much, you didn't get paid as much.
I agree with that.
The only exception was Jesus and those people in the vineyard at that time up there, when he promised them a certain wage, and somebody was complaining he only worked half day and got paid just as much. That's a different standard than what we're talking about. And Mr. Mills is sitting there smiling, but in his office, it's the same way. You take some of his staff up there, they're busy all the time. I've stopped in to see him. They got a lot of workload. I totally agree with that. But Chad Jordan's secretary really does more work than the other three constables, clerk or secretary.
Yes, sir.
And I would like to give her, and I've talked to Constable Jordan about this, I really did. And then I was saying, well, if we did that, it kind of upsets the whole apple cart on everybody else. So if you look at what your clerk is getting, it's 31,00201.
Yes, sir.
And Chad Jordan's secretary, it's called, is getting 32,940. And, you know, that's probably not fair to Constable Jordan's. In fact, I don't think it's fair at all because she does a lot more work. I think you would agree with that because you know what Chad Jordan's office does with these tax sales.
Yeah, because of the tax sales, she does do that, and our clerks don't. And not being fair, I agree with you across the board.
I don't know what to do about that.
Well, you know, I, I've got a, we're talking about positions, and, and there's a gray area, when you talk about position, you talk about the person. If you're talking about the person, we really need to do this in executive session and not air it out that Joe Blow is better than, I really don't care to do that. But the positions, it's out online, it's out there for everybody to see what these positions pay. And if you have an issue with what those positions pay, that's what this public hearing's all about.
Yes, sir.
And so that's, that's what you need to do.
That's all I wanted, was, was an opportunity to speak my mind.
I don't think we need to get into personalities, that your clerk's better, and...
I wasn't, I wasn't attempting to...
That's not what we're saying. We're saying this position, that's what's in the budget, it's a judge's budget, and we all get to see it, either approve it, not approve it, or make issues with it. And that's what you're doing. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. And it's not, it's just that Constable in Precinct Four handles tax sales.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's it. That's why I'm not saying it based upon money, because money, he blows everybody far away because of what, I mean, he took in his last tax sale, almost, what, almost $900,000 on his last tax sale.
That's, and that's by design. He handles the tax sales for all precincts.
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm saying. So this is not personalities, not smarter, not better, not anything else. It's just that the workload in that particular precinct is...
I would not argue that she doesn't deserve higher pay as well. I wasn't here arguing that.
No, no, no. And I'm not saying that at all either. I, I wish I had the money to increase everybody's salary here in the city. So, anyway.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Is there anything else that you'd like to say about it?
No, sir. That's everything I had to say.
All right. Well, thank you for bringing us to our attention. I hope that that helps you. Does anybody...
Do you need something about some ammunition, or is that...
That's on there. We, we actually already have that. She has that, it's on, it's on there.
And you're good with that, okay. Because I knew we had talked about, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Constable Ellis. Constable Chad Jordan.
Okay. Judge Commissioners, I know it's a hard job, but what y'all have, looking at a budget for the county, and as fast as we're going. I've been with the county, it's my 25th year, been total with the county since 93 at the sheriff's office, but when I look at the, the budget, I look at the county, the one thing that we have that is our greatest asset is one thing. That's our employees. And how do we take care of those employees? How do we look at those? How do we evaluate them? How do we critique and look at how we pay those employees? They sacrifice to work for this county. We've talked about it, many of you have been on the courts that have talked about, we have employees that, you know, qualify for, you know, food stamps, and we have employees that, you know, don't make enough, but they're still here because they love Hood County, they love living here, and they want to raise their kids here. But when we look at our pay and what we're paying them and how decisions are made, I know it's tough. In one aspect, we talk about a salary survey, but we don't want to talk about salary survey over here. This person, we need to increase this, so we're going to give a 22 percent pay raise. Based on last year and this year, that's 17,000 in two years. Another position we look at over a six-year span is $26,000 in pay raises for one position. But our clerks are the ones that are suffering. Our secretaries, our office managers, that are doing the work, day in, day out. And how do we evaluate that? How do we look at that to where it's even across the board? How do we pick and choose? How do we choose one over another whenever one's been here less than a year getting a 12 percent pay raise, but we're going to get 5/6 for this one? We're going to get .07 is what was first put out there for, for another one, and that's, that's changed. But how do we look at those things? How do we do it effectively and efficiently and respectfully for our employees? We're not, we, we're not doing yearly evaluations. We stopped that practice. We stopped that because we also tied that to raises to where it was based on, and the department heads and elected officials would base your raise off of your evaluation. Were you worthy? Were you making progress? Were you doing what you needed to do? Self-evaluation is something we all have to do in what we do in our jobs, and the work that we take on for the citizens and the benefit of the citizens. But I think our greatest asset is our employees. And when I look at it, you know, where we're at, and I appreciate the, the conversation earlier with, with you, Judge, and Ellis, there's a lot that goes on in our offices, serving the people. And I just humbly ask that we look at that whenever we evaluate those. And I did miss the email that said, send changes. All I saw was the email on the public hearing. And the last one, when we had the budget hearing workshop that one afternoon, we were in court, so I couldn't be here. But I appreciate it, and as you humbly look at it, on where they are and what they're getting, and are we doing it effectively, or are we just picking and choosing? Thank you.
That's all that I have on, that wanted to speak on the public hearing. Is there any other...
This is a public hearing, so anyone can speak without filling out paperwork?
No, you have to fill out a paperwork.
You're in a public meeting?
Yes.
Public meeting?
Yes. No, ma'am? You know the rules. You've spoken...
No, I, I really don't understand all the rules when it's public and when it's... It totally confused me.
Okay, well, that's it.
I didn't realize it was a public meeting. Does it say the item? Because it doesn't sound like that when it's written.
Item number seven says, take appropriate action and hold a public hearing. It's what the agenda...
I know, it sounded to me like you were going to, you were going to set a date for it. That's what I was...
Doesn't say that.
That's okay.
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Q.
So the changes I've received, you have in front of you, and we'll take them one at a time, agree to it, don't agree to it, and then I will update the current budget that's online with these changes. The first one is to increase the captain in the jail. That is necessary. It's $1,600 with additional benefits. And you have the reason why, and if you would like for me to read it, I will.
Oh, I don't think you need to read the reason for the change. Let's just go ahead and do the, what we have proposed here, benefits. Budget amount, that's an increase of $1,607, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the benefits for the captain. I'm just like, you know, the captain is a very, very important position in the jail. I think the sheriff would be the first to say that. Am I right, Sheriff Deeds on that? Sheriff Deeds on that, I mean, he's a kind of the lunchpin. And it's been 13 consecutive years in a row that Sheriff Deeds has passed the jail commission. And I think a lot of it is, is due from the top up from Sheriff Deeds and then the captain there. So I'm, I'm all in favor of that increase. So the next one you have is the sheriff administration. Is that right?
Certification pay?
Yes. Not just what they're entitled to based upon the fact that they go to schools and get their certificates or they're their master lawman or.
Correct.
Whatever.
But I, I had decreased it. When we do our budget, we're looking at a six-month estimate. Well, not even an estimate. We're looking at six months expenditure. And we try to base the budget on that. So closer to the end of the year, I look at these numbers again. And where I see that we're going to run into a problem, we bring this to your attention. And the sheriff and I talked about this. I need to increase that by $10,000, including benefits and retirement. We just need to do that. So that we, we don't have to come back next year and ask for a budget amendment for this. And that is their certificate pay. And the next one is regarding overtime for dispatch. I had reduced that budget. The sheriff asked that I bring that back up, an additional $5,000. Again, it's, I try to, I try to cut everything I can. And if they want to bring this back up, we can do that. The next item is an administrative assistant in the Commissioners Department going for an increase of $4,688. You have that information in front of you. The next one. Is that a fire alarm? Can I get out of here? $4,688 plus benefits. The next one is Justice of the Peace Precinct Two. I spoke with Martin Castillo. He would like to increase that part-time by $5,000 so that he can keep people. He would like to pay them a little more to be able to keep them. This is in lieu of hiring another full-time person. So I'm, I'm really fine with that one as far as the budgeting goes. So if you don't mind, let's take these that are, are an increase in salary. And then we can go to the last ones. So any heartburn?
Miss Commissioners Assistant, where'd that come from? Where'd that increase come from? I don't remember talking about this.
That was one of the ones that was suggested by a different commissioner.
Well, yeah, I think the Commissioners need to discuss this. What, what is the current salary for our assistant right now?
It's less than $32,822 because that's the proposed salary for fiscal year 2022. I don't have her current salary in front of me, but that's the difference. So this, the proposed $32,822 is what we would pay normally. And they're wanting to bring that position up to, I believe, $37,510.
Current salary is $31,783. Pardon? What does that mean? Just a statement, huh? Oh, okay. She's not a clerk? Is that what you're saying? Oh, okay. Well, I just didn't know what you were going.
Well, I think if the Commissioners, if you're objecting to it, I think maybe we should adjourn into executive session and talk about it since it's a Commissioners Assistant. This personnel matter, we all know who it is, so. I, I couldn't hear what you said.
Are we, are we still in public hearing, is what you're asking?
Yes, sir.
We're still in public hearing? You didn't close a public hearing, I suppose?
No. I could.
You wanted to do.
I can convene out. I'll tell you what I think, what we may do. It's let, so far, that's the only one that I've seen any wanting to discuss that, one way or the other. I suggest let's just finish the rest and see if there's anything else. And then we can go back into that in executive session at the end of all of this. So does that sound feasible to everybody else? I don't see why we have to keep everybody here if we're going to go into executive session. Doesn't that sound?
Yes. The, the next four don't relate to salary. The first one is to add vacation and travel to the Sheriff's Department. Again, we do this at six months. The last six months of the year, their travel has increased significantly. So I would like to add $10,000 to that budget. The canine expense, they've added another dog. I would like to add an additional $1,800 for food and care for the new dog. Constable Precinct Three, he's already been up here. I'd like to add an additional $500 to his ammunition line. That's not anything that's out of the ordinary. And the last one is, thank goodness, I had a mistake. Our lovely Personnel Director said she needed 32. I thought she meant 32,000, so I gave her 32,000. Luckily, she only needed 3,200. So this decrease of $28,800 will more than cover anything you want to do. And the last thing is, I'm sorry, we haven't added one. Add $5,000 for the Historical Commission. That hasn't been utilized in years past. That's the only reason it wasn't on here. So it's entirely up to you what you want to do. And you, we can take all these at once, except that one, however you want to do it.
Well, let's try and make a motion now. Try to make a motion and see if it'll go. Let's, I'll move that we accept all those changes, except the one Administrative Assistant for the Commissioners as presented in this document.
Your second. Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton to accept all the budget changes that have been enumerated by the Auditor Becky Kidd, with the exception of the Administrative Assistant for the Commissioners Court, second by Commissioner Wilson.
Can, can I, can I throw something in here? Because this is.
Yes, yes, you do.
We needed to talk about the fire departments. I thought that we had agreed, looking at all the fire departments, that their base, baseline, all, all the, what they need to operate, their baseline expenses for the, the least expensive department. Is that the right way to say that? The one, the lowest cost projected to us for an annual budget was $60,000. And I thought that we had discussed an increase in the fire departments to 60 per department.
Oh, we did? Go ahead and explain what I thought.
What we had talked about, and I believe I've talked to every one of you about this, is that we give them their, their standard $30,000 stipend on October 1st. And then later on, very quickly later on, when we figure out what all, we're paying Tyler Installation Four out of Fund 68, that would free up more money in capital projects to increase the stipend to the fire departments. And it's either way, however you want to do it. I would prefer it come out of capital projects and I don't have to go back and really find some more money in 10 when we've.
But we were talking about an additional $30,000 though.
Yes, sir.
Where does the original $30,000 come from?
That's already budgeted. Comes out of Fund 10, it's already budgeted.
Not out of Fund 55, but now an additional 30, you're suggesting we take that out of Fund 55?
Yes, sir.
Wonder why that is? I'm just, I don't.
Why? Because, because I don't have it anywhere else. Unless you want me to pull more from prior year, which I really don't want to do. We have it in capital. Katie has agreed to pay for some of the Tyler installation, which I have already budgeted. So if we pay for some of the Tyler installation out of Fund 68, it frees up money in capital projects for this. And it freed up pretty quickly. Absolutely.
Yes, for the Records Management Fund, I'm only able by statute to pay for what my office uses. So I sent you that. Is that how much it's costing for my office?
Drew, do you remember? $268,000.
Okay. Yes, that was that breakdown from Tyler. Yes, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm not paying for like, you know, your office and everybody's office.
I need a new car.
Okay.
So if she gives us $268,000, we're almost there. So that will help considerably. This will take the burden off of general fund. So I'm fine with that. That we can discuss at the next court, First Court in October. I don't have to do anything with that today because that's not something that's not already there. I don't have to make any changes. Just agree that that's along the lines of your thinking and we will get that in place after October 1st. Are we okay with that?
Yeah. While we're talking, I'm for private departments.
And Kevin and I had talked about doing it that way.
Yeah, that would work. Okay. So with that clarification, we've got the motion by Mr. Cotton to approve all of the budget changes enumerated by Becky Kidd on the handout, with the exception of the Administrative Assistant for the Commissioners Court, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five, zero. Okay. I guess that brings us down to, that was seven, wasn't it?
Number eight.
That brings us down to number eight. Take appropriate action to vote to set salaries and other allowances for all elected county and precinct officers. We've got one person that would like to speak on this. This is Nanette Samuelson. Do you want to go ahead and come up here and address Ms. Samuelson first?
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for allowing this time for us to talk about things that are on the agenda and that are on the minds of the taxpayers in Hood County. As you consider this agenda item to set salaries and other allowances for the county, please consider the last 18 months and what the county taxpayers have been through. Families have lost wage earners. Businesses have closed. People have lost their jobs due to employers downsizing and closing. While the county forced businesses to shut down fully or partially, causing loss of income or even completely losing their business and their life savings, the taxpayers continued to fully fund all county employees. In fact, I believe, if memory serves, the court has approved extra pay for some county employees this last year. So please consider the optics and the message you're sending to the taxpayers and the citizens of Hood County as you consider these increases in salary and budget. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Kidd.
Some of the laws have changed in how we have to present things to the court. One of them was for the salaries and other allowances. And other allowances typically mean fuel or car allowance. And then we don't have anyone that gets paid for a car or anything of that nature. So basically, this is the allowances for all elected officials. Precinct officers are, are also elected. It's just standard that we have to get this approved so that an ad can go in the paper.
We didn't, on the setting salaries for elected officers, the, we didn't increase anything, did we?
Yes, sir.
But the standard that's.
Last year, no one that was elected received a raise.
That's right.
This year, it's 3%.
It's 3%.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sitting here thinking about something else here. You know, backing up to the previous deal on the public hearing, did I reconvene out of the public hearing to go back to Commissioners Court to vote on that change? I did? I did reconvene? Awfully, I did not hear you. Let me go back to number, to number seven then, to, out of the public hearing. We were having a public hearing on the fiscal year 2020 proposed Hood County budget. I'm going to go back and say I'm going to reconvene into the Commissioners Court out of the public hearing and now to vote on the budget changes that were enumerated by Ms. Becky Kidd. And you made the motion, Commissioner Cotton made the motion to approve the budget changes that were discussed, with the exception of the Administrative Assistant for the Commissioners Court, which would be done in executive session, that was seconded by Commissioner Wilson. And let's all vote on that again. All those in favor of the budget changes as discussed by Becky Kidd, with the exception of the Administrative Assistant for the Commissioners Court? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Budget changes, with the exception of the Administrative Assistant, passes unanimously, five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Lang. I just didn't hear you. Okay. But maybe my subconscious did. Okay. Now we're back into the salaries up here. And with that explanation then, I guess what, we don't really need to vote on that, do we, right now, or do we?
Yes, you do.
We do?
Yes, sir. I need to get the ad in the paper, that statute, so.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion to vote to set the salaries and other allowances for all elected county and precinct officers? Anybody wish to make a motion in that regard?
Now.
I guess it may fail for lack of a motion for any kind of elected office, offices here. And we would maintain the certain salary that we had for last year.
If that's what you gentlemen want to do, I will go and change the budget. But again, either way, there has to be an ad in the paper.
Well, that way that it, it, you know, we've all been through a hardship, as Samuelson said on the thing. And I think that may set a good tone for everybody to let us know that we've all had to tighten our belt here. So.
No, no increase for elected officials, correct?
Just elected officials, that's correct. That's what this says. And other allowances, I don't know what other allowances.
Car allowance, if that's, it's, this is the verbiage from the government code, so I use what they're.
Yeah, so it's just the salaries that's really.
Basically. Yes, sir.
Okay. So item number eight, to take appropriate action to set a salary increase for the elected officials fails for lack of a motion. Okay. This brings us to item number nine. Discuss and take appropriate action on a budget. Okay. Discuss and take appropriate action on a budget for Fund 83 involving the American Rescue Fund. Okay. And on that, we have four people that wanted to talk. Sharon Seelander.
No, I just wanted to hear the discussion as soon as I had questions.
Okay. Okay. Item number two, Jim Jarrett. He wants to be addressed as Citizen Jim Jarrett here in the Commissioners Court.
I want to be mayor on this one.
Okay, you want to be mayor?
I want to be mayor, yes.
Quit trying to confuse me here.
As, as you discussed the, the American Relief Act that we have here, I just wanted to, to, you know, reinforce that the city represents about 12,000 employees or 12,000 population. And we are all in the county. And any of the actions that you might take where you would need or want city involvement, we are, we are signed up. We're willing to work with you, would like to work with you in these areas that may be appropriate. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Anita Branch.
Hello, Commissioner. Thank you for letting me speak today. And I'd like to just say, with the Unexpected American Recovery Act funds that we will be receiving, we have a wonderful opportunity to discuss critical needs in our community. Given that the Hood County Development Rules are in place, in part to implement the county's strategic plan and to protect the watershed that drains into Lake Granbury and the Brazos River from the ill effects of pollution and urbanization caused by uncontrolled development for the present and future residents of Hood County and thereby for all citizens of the state using the lake and the river for recreational purposes. That's a direct quote. The watershed that drains into Lake Granbury includes numerous unnamed small tributaries as well as larger tributaries such as Rucker Creek and Lambert Creek. These tributaries are under assault by both a city proposal to dump 2 million gallons of sewage effluent every day into Rucker Creek. And there's also a proposal by a private developer who has had millions of dollars in judgments against him to dump one and a half million gallons of sewage effluent into Lambert Creek. The discharge route for this private developer is entirely within the 100-year floodplain and will impact numerous recreation facilities as it winds its way behind our beautiful city hall. Can you imagine the disaster that will be when he's discharging during a 100-year event? Using American Recovery Act funds in conjunction with coordination and cooperation between this commission and city officials will do much to alleviate our wastewater infrastructure crisis. And I'd like for you all to consider using those funds for that purpose. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Victoria Calder.
Yes, I would like to also expand upon what Ms. Branch said in terms of consideration of using the funds to alleviate our biggest crisis right now that faces the greater community, and that is our infrastructure crisis. Both of the projects that are pending. Both of the projects that are pending but not yet permitted for new sewer plants, both the one that's proposed on Old Granbury Road and the one that is forthcoming in the county outside city limits, the West Project, involve discharging effluent down narrow, shallow, winding creeks. And we presented a lot of research, but I won't bore you with all of that again, but the discharging waste, treated wastewater down narrow, shallow creeks where the effluent cannot be safely dispersed and diluted is a problem across the state. There is a lot underway right now to tighten the TCEQ restrictions at the national level, the EPA, that's forthcoming, but if these get grandfathered in, it will be a little too late to do that. So what we're asking is that you consider using some of that to, some of that money in combination with private and public partnership. There's also a lot of funding available through TCEQ to clean up the septic tanks under their TMDL program that's available. And if we use that funding, one of the main reasons that has been given for not discharging that wastewater into a wider part of the Brazos or TLAP where it can be safely diluted and dispersed is that the cost of the piping would be high. So this would be an opportunity to consider offsetting those costs, as well as looking at grants that were never explored. That is, again, under this newest 2020 update, October 2020 update of your guidance under the jurisdiction of the Commissioner's Court. One thing that hasn't been considered is the criticality, the severity of consequences of not only discharging the effluent into narrow, shallow, sometimes bone-dry creeks where it's just going to be an open sewer, especially the one in the floodplain that runs behind City Hall by the square. In addition to that, every sewer plant pretty much eventually has raw sewage spills. Over Memorial Day, the sewer plant at Waco had an accidental malfunction, which is extremely common, they all do, and over four and a half million gallons of raw sewage discharged right into the Brazos River. Google it, I was interviewed by the news down there, it was Dr. Dornak. Dr. Dornak commented, at least at that part of the Brazos, it was a wide, deep, flowing part of the Brazos. So four and a half million gallons of raw, anything that flushes, went right out into the Brazos there. And it will be devastating, but not nearly as devastating, can you imagine the raw sewage spills in Lambert Creek behind City Hall by the square and the raw sewage spills that will occur in our backyard of Rucker Creek where hundreds of people swim, float, fish? So the raw sewage spills are severe, and over the Memorial Day weekend in Waco, every boat ramp was closed, every boat ramp, signs everywhere that if you go near that water, you bathe and you wash your clothes. You're responsible, according to these guidance, for the public health and public welfare. TCEQ considers water that's used for recreational purposes to be under the category of public welfare, and certainly, public health is going to be an issue with these raw sewage spills. So we hope that you would at least look at the research, the Congressional Research Service Report of 2019, and I gave it to those of you, but not the newer people, be happy to present that with you, not our opinion, but the Congressional Research Service opinion on the consequences of wastewater, municipal wastewater discharges in narrow, shallow creeks. The Blanco River has new research where, when they had to discharge it temporarily, the effluent into the Blanco, and within five weeks, the golden algae had devastated that portion of the river. The pictures upstream from the Blanco, and this is all online, show the clear, flowing river. Downstream from the sewer plant, a few yards, it begins to be thick with golden algae. The same thing in the San Gabriel River near Liberty Hill. They upstream from that sewer plant, clear, a few yards downstream from the sewer plant, you can walk across that algae and the fish kill that goes with it. So across the state, we're looking at tightening, and by we, multiple organizations as well as state agencies, tightening the restrictions. Other sewer plants are built, like the one in Abilene, knowing this is forthcoming. As the engineer who's over this project for Old Granbury Road stated in a city council meeting, he said, "This is a wastewater plant, there will be upsets." But the Abilene plant that he built, he said, "We've prepared, Abilene has prepared 20, 30 years in the future for what's coming, we're ready. Granbury is not ready. Please consider using these funds to fix that." Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak and discuss anything on item number nine, the budget for Fund 83 involving the American Rescue Fund? That's all the paperwork that I have had here. Mr. Webster, when do we have to turn into something that's more binding than what we discussed at the last Commissioner's Court hearing?
August 31st.
August 31st?
Yes, sir.
So we will have another meeting on, what is it, the 24th? Is that our next meeting, August the 24th? I guess to try to do that then. So with that, all those who would like, thank you, sir, would like to stick around to hear what we do with the Administrative Assistant for the Commissioner's Clerk, you may, but at this time, we're going to adjourn the Commissioner's Court into executive session to discuss the Administrative Assistant for the Commissioner's Court. Thank you all for coming, you may stick around if you'd like, you may leave if you like. Thank you very much. At this point, we're at three minutes to 11:00, we're adjourning into executive session.
Administrative Assistant for the Commissioner's Court.
I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion. We have, you know, this budget changes to be discussed today, we have a sheet of paper here that shows a proposed budget amount of 32,822, which is a 3% raise from last year, so I make a motion that that's where we take the Administrative Assistant.
I'll give a second to Commissioner People's motion to give the Administrative Assistant for the Commissioner's Court a 3% raise, raise it to $32,822.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Andrews, please go to the discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails, three to two. Is there any other motion that everyone carries for that?
I'll make the motion, Judge, to increase the Administrative, Commissioner's Administrative Assistant to, an increase over the 32,822 of $4,688. I didn't do the figure to what that makes it, but that would be the increase per the sheet, I guess.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Cotton to raise the Administrative Assistant to $32,822 plus the $4,688, which would be to $37,510. So I hear a second to that motion. I second. Commissioner Cotton has made a motion to increase the Administrative Assistant's salary to $37,510, seconded by Judge Mashenfield. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, three to two. Are there any other motions that the Commissioner wished to make?
Okay. No, no, I'm not getting into this. I have nothing against Ms. Shannon at all. The only thing that, and I've been here a long time, so I'm going to come. We have to look...
I'm sorry, I need to have it on the record.
That's why I said...
Well, that's, that's, that's really my problem, I know. Just don't know when to shut up sometimes. Gentlemen, you can't look at a person, you have to look at the job duties, correct? So when you do, when you try to increase someone by that amount, and believe me, I don't want to be standing here, but I'm talking for all the other clerks in this county.
Do you realize we changed the jobs duties of this position? Do you realize how much more duties we put on this position during the year? Do you realize that?
You want to explain that to everyone?
Sure, you bet. That position came in, and it was agreed upon this court that because we lost the Agenda Clerk, I'm going to call it that, and it's not what it was, under the judge, and the Commissioner's Court said, "Well, then, let's, we have some authority over the agenda," and we split it up between the Administrative Assistant for the Commissioner's Court, who really has as much control over the agenda as the judge does, and we decided that we would put that on the Administrative Assistant, new duties. The new duties of that Administrative Assistant has exploded to doing things like hyperlink to our agenda. She got us off of paperwork, got us on an iPad, so we're not printing stacks of paper like that. In addition to that, she makes the hyperlink for the public, because the court was taking criticism about transparency and not giving the public the information that they could have during court. And she developed the hyperlinks to get that out to the public. So she's taken that job, the position, she's taken the position and increased it during the year. We, as a court, have rules that we cannot give additional pay to an employee, even though we load them up with additional duties and responsibilities. We have to wait until budget time, and that's where we're at. So that's my explanation.
And I understand that.
Okay.
Again, I'm coming from the standpoint of having worked here a long time, I know what offices do. There are some offices in this county that they take in a ton of money.
I'm not here to talk about the rest of the offices.
I'm talking about responsibility, job descriptions. I'm talking about offices that take in a ton of money, that the clerks are responsible to bring in over a million dollars a month. They have to take classes, they have to have education, they deal with the public 10, 20 times a day. All I'm saying is that I'd like to see everybody make a fair wage for the job they do, and I understand what you're saying. So I'd like to make a recommendation to you gentlemen, so that we can resolve this, I suggest that we move her up a step.
Which would be what?
Melissa, you have that by any chance? She, wherever she is right now, the proposed raise goes up another step, so that would be 6.16% increase.
6.1? Does the budget follow our current step and grade? I don't even know if you can do it by just a step, it may have to be a percentage, based off what I've heard today.
Well, what we've done is we have increased every category in the county by 3.27%. And the reason every category except elected and appointed officials increased by 3.27% was because in order to get the clerks to $15 an hour starting pay, that was the overall increase that you needed to adjust per se. So if you, that's, so yes, we are following the step and grade plan for all practical purposes. It's just every grade got a cola.
Okay.
So if you give her, she's at a, let's say she's at a 3.6 right now, that step went up 3.27%. So her step and grade...
So each step went up 3.27.
Correct. So that would not change. She, she would still be to 3.7, but with a 3.27% increase. So now we'll move her to a 3.8, so it'll be a 6.16% increase. I'm just trying to help.
I appreciate that.
6.1% increase?
6.16, approximately.
6.16.
6.16 times, she's making 31,783 now, is that right?
31,7...
That's correct.
783. See what that comes to.
No. Does that make sense, Melissa?
It does, I don't know how easy it's going to be to follow in the future.
It's what I did last year. Last year was a 2%, every step got 2%. Instead of moving people up, you know, typically in the years past, you went from a step 7 to a step 8. Instead of doing that, we just did across the board 2% last year, so that whether you were at step 1 or step 15, which was always a problem, that they never got the same increase, everybody got a 2% across the board.
Okay.
I hope I helped. I, I want to see everybody, I've always said, I, our clerks need to make more money. I've always been a proponent for that, but I don't want it to get to where there's a disparity.
Make a motion that the proposed increase totals 33,280.
I'll second that, and that's, I think that's based on the judge's calculations.
Is that the 6%?
A number, or just say the step and grade, and then the...
Step, please.
Yeah, I think that that would be simpler to do the, do the step... If you say the step and grade, then you'll put the money to it also? Okay. All right.
Ask the employee by one step.
Okay.
That's, that's better.
You can mark... We got a motion and a second right now.
Who's going to make the motion?
Commissioner Wilson did.
Mr. Wilson, will you change that to reflect just moving that employee one more step?
You already have a second.
Got a second. Got a vote. Well, we'll just let it fail.
By one step would be the same as, what's the dollar amount?
See, I came up with 33,721.
So that's what I'm saying, just, just indicate, just let this motion die, do it again as one step, so that it is on, that I have to come back and change this. Okay?
Okay.
Please.
Okay, then how much is going to be, I'd like, call for vote, then all those in favor of increasing to 33,280 by the Commissioner's Court, seconded by Commissioner Eagle, say aye.
I think it was 32,280, wasn't it?
33,280.
Okay, 30, all right. I'll, I'll, yes.
280, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. Should I try? Or should I do both?
Okay. I'll make a motion that we move Shannon up one step and grade. With, which would end, wait, to what salary? Can I ask that question? I don't think we should. I'm coming up with that number.
Just in discussion, we didn't make...
I think it's 33,721.
I'd like to have confirmation of that, if that's what you see. I don't have anything on my phone, if you can, if you have anything on mine. If you have mine.
Because if it was her salary plus 6.1%, then that was... That's what you're, that's how you got it up to the 6.1%? Yes. The motion to increase it by 6.1%? But I would rather keep it in the step system, so that it doesn't make everything a nightmare. So 31,783, is it 6.1% increase? Is that, or 6.1...
That is what she said, but she also said each step increased 3.27. So...
3.27% increase?
So is it?
It would...
Current step times 3.27 more?
0.0616.
Actually, no, because it would be a different number. Once you, once you move the step up, then you would multiply that times the 3 for the increase, so it would be different. Because of 3% on top of the step. Yeah, it'd be a 3% on top of the step, not 6.2, or 6.1 on the current. I try to make it easy and just move up a step, you gotta complicate. I guess it is what it is, move it up a step. Yeah. And then a 3% increase on top of the step. Because the cost of living raises going with the 3% on top of the step.
Would you not just take your proposed salary times 3.27 if each step increases 3.27?
Yes.
Okay.
It would, well, it would, last year's to go up to the next step is 3.27, that's a, that's a hard, fast number, that's, that's good.
And if I just understood correctly, each step is an increase of 3.27? Is that what I understood?
Okay. Times 1.0327, okay, that's 32,822. Times 3%. Now, if it's going up an additional 3%, it'll be times 1.03, and that's 33,806, and 97 cents of 32,000.
So it would be about 33,800.
What I was told, I can't verify that, to be honest with you.
I came up with 33,895.
If the step is a 0.0616, that's what she said, why Becky?
No, the step is, the step is 3.
500 dollars, Jack, right? Is that what they're talking about?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, over what I, what I proposed.
Step, which is 3.27, and an additional 3% on top of that, comes out to 33,806. Within pennies.
Yeah.
Ballpark.
Ballpark. But I think that it's easier to leave it on the step plan, so if we, I don't want to get this. That's real easy.
Okay. Or can you move? Is there?
I made a motion to increase her step.
A motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to increase the Administrative Assistant for the Commissioners' Court by one step, which equates to 33,806, seconded by.
Well, you had to make it clear, there was another 3% on top of the step. You're going to increase the step.
Well, and that's, that's where we are with that number. So it's, it's roughly 33,800.
You have to increase by one step.
Yes.
Just do that.
Yes.
And then it will be profitable, you don't have to come back and do this, and we're trying to get to the actual number, but would you?
Say that, Commissioner. Yes, I make a motion that we increase the Commissioners' Court Administrative Assistant's salary one step.
You second?
Backed by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no two carries by a zero.
That was easy.
That was easy.
Yeah. Like a piece of cake, wouldn't it?